I wish everyone's rise as we do the flag salute and the indication. Flag salute.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the unit for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our most gracious heavenly father, we come to you tonight, Lord, just thanking you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us every day that we take for granted, Lord. Lord, just thank you for your son Jesus in this time of year to have us to focus on the real reason of the season. And time to spend time with family and reunite. And Lord, just be with us tonight as we conduct the business of the council. We have some council members absent this evening, give them safe travel and heal their bodies, Lord. Lord, just give us the wisdom to do the very best we can for this community. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen. Well, welcome everyone, thank you all for coming. Still pleasant weather outside, not cold.
Getting cool.
So, at this time, would the clerk call roll please?
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Poe. Mr. Cheryl. Ms. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Kathy.
Here.
This is the public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the post agenda, you may address the council at this time. Hearing none will move down the business agenda, item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I recommend approving.
Second. Have a motion in second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding accepting and rejecting the city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Delay, how are you sir?
Everyone, how are y'all?
Good.
My report's on attachment number two. If anyone has any questions.
Questions for the city manager.
Do you have any, recommend approving?
Second.
A motion in second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes. Item number three, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting the payment purchase orders for the city of Otoka for the month of November, two thousand and twenty-three.
Those are on attachment number three, if anyone has any questions.
I recommend approving.
Second.
A motion in second, roll call please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes. Item number four, discussion and or action on possible relocation of surplus or surplus of Hollister tank serial number BMY five oh nine, which is presently on display at the forty-fifth memorial park on Great House Drive presented to an agreement with the secretary of army dated September eleventh, two thousand and eight. Mr. Delay, does this one go to you?
Yeah, this is on attachment number four, where it shows where the city of Otoka accepted this, I think it was back in...
September eleventh, two thousand and eight, the agreement? Prior to that, I think it was like nineteen ninety-six.
I'm gonna say it was originally...
Ninety-six, yeah.
Probably some of the paperwork.
Then they did a conditional, well, this was called conditional date of gift combat material for static display.
Oh, okay.
The reason we're doing, even talking about this, that's in my war, war two. The school owns the property that that is sitting on, and we could use that a little better without that thing being there. My original thought was to move it over to the community center out by the monuments, and we've had lots of discussion about that. I had talked to one previous city manager, and he wasn't too sure that it was a good deal to have it because little boys like to climb out on the, whatever that thing is, that the bullets go out of, and they afraid somebody's gonna fall or break their neck. So, Mr. Delay and I have talked about just giving it back to the people that brought it down here. Now, whether that's viable or not, or whether the community would want to do that, I don't know, but it's gonna have to, if you, if you put it somewhere where it's on display, and it would be on display after on highway three, it has to be probably shined and painted and maybe fenced, so.
I wouldn't wanna put it out there in present condition.
I don't have any preference for whether we keep it or move it. I, I first thought was moving it, but whatever the council wants to do, I'll be for it.
So, this was brought by the school, they, they want it?
Well, I don't know necessarily if the school wants it, but we could utilize that turnaround down there.
Cause I thought it might have been in bad condition or something, is why we decided to do this.
I'd like to clean all that out, and, and so we could maybe pave that down there. And city manager and I are talking about maybe, Mr. Martin and I have talked about putting the personnel gate for the girls, so they don't have to open, a lot of them come on weekends and work, so they have to open those two big double gates, so we're talking about putting the personnel gate there, and maybe doing some swapping. My original thought on the little awning down there, there's a lot of people that hang out down there right next door to the superintendent's office that don't need to be there. So, my original thought was using that for the girls, the little awning deal, move the picnic tables. We would possibly put in some money and build one up closer to the front where we can get everybody out from down there, and let the ladies pull in under there, use that for a kind of a parking area. So, you know, I think it'd look better, so, that's my thoughts.
Okay.
And we've fmailed the lady that we've been in correspondence with, that we haven't received anything back from her yet stating if y'all chose to have them just come and remove it and take it back to wherever they take it, you know, who would bear the cost and what those costs might be, I don't have that information yet, so.
I would like to, I, I, you know, I know there's several issues to contend with, and, you know, that's been a concern. There's a pipe rail fence around it currently, which doesn't stop anybody from just stepping in over and crawling all over. You know, that, that fencing would need to be a little more substantial if we did move it, but I think it, you know, in honoring our veterans and, and with the memorial that we have out by the community center currently, and I believe that's, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe it's probably under a lease to the VFW, is that correct?
I'm pretty sure it is, I haven't seen documentation, though.
But we need to look at that, there's liability as far as insurance and those kind of things, and would it fall under the city? Those kind of things to work out, but I think it'd be a really, uh, an attractive addition if, if that was okay with the VFW and the veterans to, to move it out there, just kind of what that cost would be. I know we have to figure out what the cost is to, to take it out one way or the other. So, if it's a cost to move it and for them to dispose of it versus us to rehab it a little bit, repaint it, and put some decals on it.
I got the, the forty-fifth, I've got a guy that I've known for years that was there for a while, was adjutant general, he lives, he retired in South Carolina, and so he made contact with some of the current former adjutant generals, they first thought that they could come get in and move it for us. Then I had two colonels call me, they's kind of passing the buck, we don't have anything to haul it. So, I called Mr. Mullins, Jim out at Mullins Recker, and he said, I got a friend at Ada in the wrecker business, so I called him and sent him some pictures and how much it weighed and all that kind of stuff. He said, I got a guy that can lift that up, run a trailer on it, and we can move it over there for about three thousand dollars. And I said, well, hopefully, I hope the school would at least go half of that. So, we've got, if somebody wants to move it or can move it, or they want to or not, I don't know.
What about the police department there, that, I think someone that's wasted, that parking lot and stuff over there at the old armory, you know, when we come out?
Well, I know they utilize that from time to time for trainings and, and big meetings when a bunch of other departments come in. But, you know, we have a, a large area out there by that memorial, it would still be seen from the highway, you know, I think.
Well, it, it's hard to see down there, and it's really underway, because we come out of there with buses. Now, we can reroute the buses down the north gate, that's not an issue. But if all that was out of that middle there, I, one board member had expressed several years back when Mr. McAdams was there, that he'd like to see it moved. So, anyway, that's kind of what we're talking about.
Cause Colgate does the same thing, I guess.
Well, theirs you can see, ours you have to hunt to see, if it was out on highway three over there, the unity building, be real visible.
Yeah, theirs is out by the roadway in their park, though it's in their park, but it's out by the, the entryway, so. Mr. Luke, are you still waiting on some other numbers to come back if we could?
Yes, I can find out both ways, if you want me to.
See insurance fencing and what it would cost to, I think we have an idea of the moving part.
Just whatever anybody wants to do, I'd just like to move it and get it out there, whether we give it away or take it, they take it back, or we move it.
Yeah, and I don't know if they allow, you know, I mean, if they have to be involved in the moving themselves, or if they allow you to do it yourself, you know, that kind of deal. We, we have to find out a little more, just need, need some direction from y'all on which way to go on this.
Well, I thought it...
I think to make a final decision, we probably need numbers both ways. If we could do that, then come back with it.
Okay, because it says if any time donated property is no longer used for display purposes, if the donor, oh, what's the donie, if the donie no longer wishes to keep the donated property written notice shall be given to the donor and title to the property shall revert to...
Yeah, they have a form for us to fill out if we want to return it.
Okay.
Well, I'd like for the other two council members to be in on the final decision, whatever we do. I guess we could table this for whatever you're gonna do.
Yeah, there's just no action on this item, and we can bring it back, bring it back at another time. Okay? Item number five, discussion and or action on approving, amending, or rejecting trust indenture to create public trust for management of Otoka Trail, Toka Trails of God, of course. Mister, Sandman is not here this evening, and I think he had some conversations with the board out there at the time.
Yes.
Do you have an update on that for us?
He said that he had explained this to y'all in that one meeting that I missed pretty thoroughly, and he was just following through, doing all the, the necessary paperwork here to get everything lined up. They've elected their, their members to be on that board.
Concerns about it, though, like, okay, it's a, so, we're, how, how much responsibility is the city gonna take over this? Cause I thought we just owned the property.
We own the property, they still have, they will do all the day-to-day operations of the courses, the...
But there's bylaws and everything in here, so, and I didn't see any articles of organization on how the money and everything was gonna, you know, the funding was gonna be...
I asked Johnny that specific question, and then he said that, uh, once he, he gets back, that he will get with me and we'll work that out, so.
So, it would flow, the funds would flow, whatever they make out there's, would be what they operate off of is my understanding, and we can get clarification of that from Mr. Sandman?
Yes.
The, it was just the, the formation of the entity is what the main need was, uh, because it couldn't be done.
So, they can't use any of our, um, credit cards or anything like, or nonprofit, city exempt stuff, or...
They can become, they'll become tax exempt, but they...
Under who?
Under the city.
Under the city.
So, they'll...
Cause they'll have an account, they'll have an account set up under, under, just like, say, AIFL and that kind of stuff. And, but, now, my understanding by asking Johnny would be that, uh, if they're gonna make a large purchase or something, then I'm gonna need to see it if I'm gonna approve it, because I don't wanna be responsible for, you know, purchasing that's not done.
The city to be responsible for.
You know, for some, so...
Because if they have bylaws, they, they, they have their own tax exempt number, so they need to...
No, it, that, all the bylaws would be under this, the, what is in that, this trust indenture, not what they had previously.
There's not any articles of organization in that either, telling on how the...
Let, let's do this so you're, so we're all on, on firm ground of exactly how this is gonna operate without Mr. Sandman here tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds like we have some questions to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the exact formation. Okay, then let's just table this till the next meeting, and then we will come back and make sure all questions are answered so that everybody's fully informed before we make any other decisions, okay? All right. So, we'll table item number five until the next meet. Okay, item number six, discussion and or action regarding accepting, rejecting the recommendation of the Otoka planning commission to approve the final plat of Capitol Hill addition, Otoka, Oklahoma. Attachment, write it in the meat. So, here's your attachment. Looks like they have worked to change that right-of-way edge on the, what would be the northeast corner for the road, road right-of-way?
Yes.
And then they've added these other cul-de-sacs, is that correct?
Yes.
Along the east, the western boundary?
They had the wrong boundary down there, they weren't including that other five acres, so it allowed them to enlarge the scope of this.
Okay. All right, roadways are sufficient with utility easements, it looks like? And then they would start with the first section of housing up here along Sixth Street, and then work their way back into the addition. So, I'm assuming they would do this first row, and then as those develop, they do this street and then this row?
That's, yeah, that's what he told me.
Okay, so it looks like by the time you got to the next phase and built the second road, he could actually do two sets in that housing, so... Okay, so...
And he would have that other road to start the other ones, and then go from there.
Looks very good. Looks like it flows much better than, than having that additional seems to...
Yeah, it makes it just look more concise.
Then, has a potential roadway out to the east on what would be Seventh Street, is that correct? It's dead-ended currently, but it would have the potential for that?
Yes.
And then another right-of-way easement on the southern end in case it needed to go to the west?
Yes.
No roadway, okay? Microphone's still on, I don't know what that pop was, so, okay. Uh, any other questions from anyone on this?
Okay, anybody having questions, I recommend approving.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion in second, roll call please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes. Very good, looking forward to seeing that addition start, a new housing addition in the town, it's exciting. Harold, thank you for all your effort on this project, and all the other times of meetings, and trying to get the developer to, to work forward with this project. I think we have a very workable plan here, and, and look forward to seeing this move forward. Okay, item number seven, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting the two thousand and twenty-four retainer agreement with complete legal from municipal attorney services. Mr. Delay, did I throw this one to you, sir?
Yes, this is Johnny's, um, new fee structure he is proposing to y'all for, uh, next year starting January.
What changed in it?
It went up, I believe it was, I believe it was twenty-five fifty, so.
On the street ends?
And it went twenty-nine ninety per month for, for guaranteed amount. That includes those first thirteen mobile hours. And then, of course, and the rate, I believe the rate stayed the same, I believe it was already, he's already going, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, all he did is just change his minimum?
Yes. And his other expenses down there, I believe they're the same as well.
Okay. Actually, um, the current mileage reimbursement rate is, is higher than that, but...
I know, I know, but he's got...
If he's asked, if that's all he's asking for, that's...
He's got a lower one, I believe it's sixty-five.
Um, well, I know he does a tremendous job for us, and, and a timely, timely job in responses, and I think he's done an excellent job in being able to, and I think it's, uh, really refreshing to have somebody local be able to be our, our city attorney.
Absolutely, makes my life easier.
Yeah.
That's the way that you can go to fairly quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, should any other questions or comments, do I hear a motion?
I recommend approving.
Second.
A motion in second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes. Uh, is there any council comments?
I have the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion in second, roll call please.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Okay, it was a move into our next meeting of the evening, the Otoka Municipal Authority, would you call roll please?
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Kathy.
Here. You need to make notice that the other two, okay. Need to make notice that the other two right there, okay. All right, as we move down, is there public comments? Is there, this is anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the council at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of December fourth, 2023.
I recommend approving.
Second.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Atoka Municipal Authority for the month of November, 2023.
Those are on attachment number two, questions?
Recommend approving.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and second. Thank you both, roll call, please.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, presentation, Magalyne Riley, for services provided at no cost by Communities Unlimited. Now, that's something you don't hear every day.
Yeah, we liked the sound of that. How about that? Galene, how are you?
I'm good. Thank you guys for letting me come and talk to you a little bit about our services.
Absolutely.
Uh, Communities Unlimited is a nonprofit corporation that operates out of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and covers seven states, including Oklahoma. I'm the Oklahoma State Coordinator. We have a staff of five, including myself, here in Oklahoma. Uh, we do work with small communities and rural water and sewer systems to help them build capacity and help them, um, improve their financial sustainability. We help with things like, um, grant, loan and grant applications, rate studies, asset management planning, you know, anything that helps put that system in a better position, uh, to be looked at more favorably by a lender or a grantor, to help with infrastructure-type needs, so water and sewer systems, that's mainly our focus, the environmental team that I had. Um, so we have worked with the city before, worked with Danny before. Um, we also helped with the community facilities projects, uh, or attempted to. I guess you finally did get the money from, from rural development for the bathrooms?
Well, yeah, it should be, I mean, that ain't.
Okay. You know, that work that we do with the community facilities, that's based off of the median house of income being below a cer- certain level. I just looked on the 2021 census information, and Atoka is now above the level to get that seventy-five percent grant through the CF, um, program through USDA. So we won't be able to help you with any projects there this time, but, um, it was brought to my attention that you guys are looking to apply for the Native American set-aside grant money through USDA.
Yes.
And they have an online application process that we can help walk the city through. Uh, so we would work with your staff to, uh, do, the first step is, you know, coming to the meeting. Uh, if you approve us to work with your staff, we do what we call a technical managerial and financial assessment. And what that does is it helps us to see, do you need any technical assistance besides what you've contacted us for? So that we can help you with those other things that you may have a gap somewhere, um, but we would.
You mean, we, we don't know what we don't know?
That, that, sometimes the case, you know, the city of Atoka, you may not need any of that technical assistance, you may only need the, the application assistance. And if that's the case, we'll help you with what you need, and if there's more, we'll help you with that. Um, but that's the first thing that we would do, so that's what I'm looking for, authorization to work with your staff to do that technical managerial and financial assessment, and to work with them to do the, the rural development, or the rural development online application. Um, that process will require, um, the board to authorize, um, someone to act as their representation, uh, to do the online application. You have to have someone that has, um, a Level Two E authentication process through the USDA. So that can be, that can be Danny, it could be one of the board members. But we have to have somebody that's gonna be the authorized representative, so they have to be, it has to be acted on by the board, that that person can sign and certify those application documents. Um, so that's the first process of that, and then we go into RD Apply, we look at your financials, we help you separate out. Um, you know, a lot of times you have cash reserves for the PWA, and it's a mixture of money that came from the water system, money that came from the sewer system, and we help you separate that out, uh, because USDA is only gonna look at the system that you're applying for funding for. And from what I understand, you're gonna do both water and sewer, so it would be two projects.
Yes.
And, uh, that Native American set-aside is a four million dollar grant. It can be a hundred percent grant if that four million dollars covers your project. And it is something that, once you meet the criteria for, which is based on your per capita income, the unemployment rate, and, um, Native American population, once you meet that, then until there's another cent, uh, ten-year census done, then you can apply for it over and over to do whatever you need to with the water and sewer system. So it's a really good program to do. Um, now, as far as our services being at no cost, that doesn't mean they're, they're free or they're of low value. We are, we get grants from USDA, EPA, and the Health and Human Services, and that's what pays for us to come in and our staff to work with, with the city to do these things. So we are being paid for our services, it's just that the city's not having to pay it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Sounds amazing.
It does. That Native American.
Set-aside grant, that's kind of the slang term for it. It's got a different title if you look at it on the USDA website, but that's what the USDA staff refer it as, the Native American set-aside.
I was gonna say, in all my discussions, that's what they call it as well, so, that's what I'm familiar with hearing.
Right.
Okay.
So, and I think.
So where do you get the information from then, um, Galene?
Uh, you can go on the USDA website and, and look at it. I think Danny got the information from talking to Pam Binsley. She's the Community Programs Director here in Atoka.
Oh.
And, um, she's the CP Director for the entire state, but she's office is here in Atoka.
I mean, because we're all like registered, you know, all like the Tchaikovsky's Chicken Sauce, because we're all registered, you know, at the, like, at the community center, so I didn't know what kind of information that you needed or whatever. You said per capita, did you?
Per capita income, and they pull that from the Census Bureau information, the unemployment rate they get from the Census Bureau. And the Native American population can come from the Census Bureau.
I got that from the Tchaikovsky's.
Yeah, sometimes the Census will show a lower percentage than what's actually there.
Especially this last one.
And, yeah, that's when.
And they answered me back in like thirty minutes.
Oh, good, good.
And we were way above, we needed fifty percent, we had sixty-nine percent.
I thought so, okay.
So, um, according to Pam, I think you've already met all three of those criteria, so it's just, it's just, you know, us getting started, getting the online application submitted.
Okay.
So where are you at now? Are you?
Here, yeah, I live about five miles outside of town.
Oh, okay, so.
She's still right here close.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
And she said you was the director, I thought, well, okay, maybe she's not, maybe she's.
No, I, I have an office just outside my house. I've got a walk-through little shed, that's my office.
Oh, that sounds good.
Okay, is there any other questions, comments?
Yeah, there's no anything to do with this, I guess, with number three.
So, so do I hear a?
He doesn't ask for one.
A discussion that. Oh.
The next one does.
Yeah, sorry, let me roll down to the fourth one.
Okay.
Discussion and/or action to authorize staff to work with Ms. Riley to complete a technical managerial and financial assessment and technical assistance work plan.
I recommend.
Do I hear a motion?
I recommend approving.
There we go. Yeah, a motion and second, roll call, please.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for straightening me out.
Thank you very much.
I'll get with you in the morning to see if we can, when we can get together.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you want to start on this tonight or in the morning, or?
Yeah, I can do it tomorrow, I can do it tomorrow if y'all are ready.
No, yeah, we're ready when you are.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Riley, thank you for helping us out.
I was gonna call you, Galene Harden, but I thought, okay, I'm sure it's not. Frazier, yes, yes, Galene Frazier, yes, sir.
Okay, is there any trustee comments? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
All right, next meeting of the evening is the Atoka City Industrial Development Authority, would you call roll, please?
Miss McGee?
Here.
Mister Turner?
Here.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
Here.
Yep, sorry, here, sorry, thank you.
You're all right, bro.
I've had a long week, y'all, and it's just Monday.
It's true.
Okay. So we're good? Did I answer right?
We're good, we're good.
Okay, thank you, all right, here we go. This is public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of December fourth, 2023.
I recommend approving.
Second.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting Economic Development Director's report. Good evening, Ms. Carol.
Good evening. So, uh, again, we've got a lot going on, um, both at our heavy industrial park and along the highway, and, which leads to lots of meetings, but, uh, so we, we are plugging along, and, um, I believe Green Lion will have their first machine up and running by mid-February with all the correct permits on that, and, of course, the top priority at our heavy industrial park is to get our infrastructure improved and to get access to the northwest section of our park.
Carol, I'm sorry, uh, the Green Lion?
Uh-huh.
What is it again? I forget.
That is the battery recycling plant. And they are just, both of our industries that are coming in are just being wonderful community partners, they're very good to work with. So I'm just really proud of, of, uh, I'm really proud of the quality of these, of both of these organizations. Um, of course, we still have a lot of developments occurring on the highway, and, uh, I did want, I did throw in that our current Atoka County unemployment rate is three point four percent. So, we're doing pretty good. Tourism is working on a calendar of events for next year, and the events that occurred downtown with the, uh, in the plaza with the Santa's workshops and the kids singing. One report from, uh, somebody was down there saying, it was just like a Hallmark movie, you know, so I mean, I want to commend Cindy for making that so successful. That was really, that was really great. And the chamber, it was the same night as the Chambers Christmas Parade, so it just made for a really great time in downtown, so. Oh, and then I just want to remind everybody that has live entertainment to please get those things turned in by the end of the month or the following month, so that we can make sure we get it on the Visit Atoka website.
Okay.
Anybody have questions?
Any questions? No questions?
If not, I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of the purchase orders for the Atoka City Industrial Development Authority for the month of November, 2023. Questions on those?
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Okay, as we move down, any, I do have one comment. Tomorrow night, have your Christmas lights on early. There may be judging of Christmas lights tomorrow evening, so everyone.
What do you call early?
Well, before, as, shortly after the sun goes down. How would that be?
That's gone.
When it starts to get a little dark.
Yeah, we'll be out, out looking at Christmas lights tomorrow night, so. Uh, at this time, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes. Okay. Moving to our next meeting of the evening, the Atoka Industrial Facilities Authority, would you call roll, please?
Miss McGee?
Here.
Mister Turner?
Here.
Mister Kathy?
Here. Got it right that time, Danny. All right, as we roll down, if this is a public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move into the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of November twentieth, 2023.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the sports complex manager's report. Good evening, Carol.
Good evening. So Curtis and Destry are working on getting things ready for next, next season. Really aggressively, uh, Curtis is, is working very hard on the grounds to, to get them prepared. Destry is planning on starting, uh, s- ramping stuff up in January, so more than likely our registration will start occurring in January. So we are looking forward to a very big, really good tw- season next year.
Yeah, well, I'll be that next year. I'm three years old.
It's just nothing, nothing cuter than those little guys. We had thirty-two T-ball teams last year.
Wow.
And, uh, this year, we've already got people, he's got people from Hartsworn and everywhere else coming here to play next year. So, it's, uh.
Love to have them.
It, it's gonna be great. This is, it is so exciting, and I tell you, there is just nothing better than watching a little kid that can barely walk hit a ball.
Awesome. Any other questions, comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the report?
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Atoka Industrial Facilities Authority for the month of October. That would be November, correct?
Yes.
There's a typo there. We've already approved the ones for October, that should say November.
I recommend approving.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Okay, item number four, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting fiscal year 2024 budget for the Atoka Industrial Facilities Authority.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions further for Carol on the budget? Hearing none, do I hear?
I recommend approving.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Okay, item number five, discussion and/or action on adopting or rejecting Resolution Number 2023 dash twenty-two, approving the fiscal year budget 2024 for the Atoka Industrial Facilities Authority. Do I hear a motion?
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes. As we move down, trustee comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Miss McGee?
Yes.
Mister Kathy?
Yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Okay, as we move into our last meeting of the evening, the Atoka City Airport Authority Trust, would you call roll, please?
Mister Turner?
Here.
Mister Kathy?
Here.
Miss McGee?
Here.
Okay, as we move down, again, public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda.